Good evening, this board, this meeting of the Board of Education for November 12th, 2013 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. All items that will be voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS website and will be archived there for future reference. Before we begin with our agenda, I'd like to ask Director Adkins, who joined me and Superintendent Smith, to provide her report from a conference that we recently attended. Director Adkins?
Great, thank you so much. So, Co-Chair Belial and I, and I also can, we can get this posted afterward on the website, I apologize, we don't have the, completing in time to do that. So, Co-Chair Belial and I recently attended the National Summit for Courageous Conversation in St. Louis, along with Superintendent Smith and nearly eighty Portland Public Schools staff from around the district, including principals, teachers, and central office staff. This was the second Courageous Conversation Summit I have attended, and once again, it was an intense, rewarding opportunity for professional and personal development. I came away with a deeper personal understanding of racial equity leadership, a renewed appreciation of the Portland Public Schools principal and teacher teams who are doing this work in our schools, a deeper understanding of effective strategies and better practices to serve all children, and a renewed sense of hope and urgency around our racial equity work. A huge highlight at the summit was seeing Superintendent Smith and Irvington K teacher Todd Rainier receiving national awards for their work. Superintendent Smith was awarded the Summit Leadership Award, to quote from the award citation, "This award is presented to an administrator who skillfully and courageously establishes an equity anti-racist culture and climate in schools that enables all staff and students, especially those of color, to feel their power and achieve at higher levels. The Summit Leadership Award recipient is distinguished in the following ways: passionate about transformational leadership at the personal, professional, and organizational level; practices are strategic, equity-focused, mission-driven, and results-oriented; persistent in the pursuit of racial justice in schools," end quote. So I wish everyone could have been there with us as hundreds of educators from all around the country rose in a standing ovation and long, loud cheers for our superintendent. It was a very, very proud moment for Portland Public Schools. So please join me now in applauding Carol for this national recognition of her work. And it was equally awesome, in the same award ceremony, to see Todd, a middle school teacher at Irvington K, receive the Summit Learning and Teaching Award. And there's one for each category, so one superintendent, one teacher, one community member, so this is a big deal. This award, again quoting the citation, "is presented to classroom teachers who demonstrate radically innovative, culturally relevant instruction that engages all students and especially promotes the highest achievement of underserved student of color populations." Todd's speech, like Carol's, was eloquent and moving, and again, the entire huge ballroom was standing and cheering for him. It was, again, a really, really proud moment for Portland Public, so I know he's not here, but I want to give Todd a big round of applause for his national award. And I was in a session with him right after the presentation, and it was, he was just a delightful person, it was wonderful. So during the summit, we heard from several keynote speakers, national experts with inspiring and challenging presentations on topics including finding joy in teaching students of diverse backgrounds, culturally responsive and socially just practices in U.S. classrooms, and new strategies for combating the opportunity gap, a Native American perspective. Greg and I collaborated with fellow board members from the St. Paul, Minnesota School District to hold a session where we talked about the challenges around doing the equity work from the board perspective. This is the first time that board members had gotten together at summit. It was very powerful to hear from and talk with our colleagues from districts around the country who are also deeply engaged in this work. Other sessions we attended during the summit included hearing from St. Paul again how they, in one year, are changing their entire special education model away from isolated classrooms to full inclusion. Our own Roseway Heights K-18 principals and teachers also presented during the summit on how they are doing this very thing in their school. It's a very exciting work, and conversation to be continued here. We are so proud that fully nine sessions at the summit were led by our very own PPS teachers, principals, and staff. It is a competitive process to get session proposals approved, and our district led the way as national leaders and practitioners in the pursuit of educational equity. I hope that we will celebrate and learn from the work and leadership of all these great PPS teams. So throughout the trip, Greg and I informally connected with our PPS folks over meals and the hallways during sessions. Carol had an informal get-together of the entire team, which was wonderful, where we shared. And it was a huge benefit for us as board members to have that informal opportunity to interact with our teachers and staff. So for example, on the first day, we just sat down randomly at a table and introduced ourselves, and it turned out that this was the teacher team from MLC, and they were awesome. They were energized, they were united, and they were so excited to present their work with their principal, so it was, it was just great. We connected, of course, with folks from other districts around the country as well, hearing about their successes and challenges, and sharing our collective dedication to the work so that all our children of all races will benefit and thrive. It was truly inspiring and will carry me through the year to come. We noticed that a few districts were able to bring parents, some parents and students with them in their contingent, so I hope we can do this in the future and would love to have a conversation about how we might be able to do that. It would be incredibly valuable. And finally, we learned that Pacific Educational Group, who puts on the summit, is planning to hold one of their regional summits in Portland next July. So this is a huge opportunity for us here in our own hometown to provide access for more staff, for parents, for students, and community members, as well as board members, to be involved. So I look forward to working with staff and Pacific Educational Group to make the most of this Portland opportunity. So those are just some highlights and reflections on what was an amazing experience, and I just appreciate the opportunity to have this professional development and personal development to participate and to represent our board and our district. It was an honor, so thanks very much.
Thank you, Director Adkins. Director Knowles will be presenting a report from a conference that she attended last week called the Council of Great City Schools, so be looking forward to that. At this time, we will have public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, we have six. Our first two speakers, Bruce Scherer and Paul Anthony.
Great, as you two approach, I'm going to read the instructions for public comment, but I know that you're both pretty familiar, as I've seen you here before. So thank you very much for taking the time to come to our board meeting. We do deeply value public input and look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address issues to the board. While it's appropriate to raise concerns about school, staff, or issues, it's our expectation that this will be done in a constructive manner and that public speakers will have ensured the accuracy of their statements. It's unacceptable to use this forum to make untrue or inappropriate statements about schools or staff. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but the board or staff will follow up on various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you have left your contact information, either phone number or email on the signup sheet, and there have been a couple of times when I've actually tried to follow up with somebody and they haven't left that contact information, and so I wasn't able to. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. While we value everyone's perspective, our rules do not allow criticism of individual staff members by name during public comment. You have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on, and when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound, and we respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. Again, thank you for coming and thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Scherer. I'm a parent at MLC, the last name is spelled S-C-H-E-R-E-R, and I'm here to talk about bargaining instead of MLC. The communication from the district about bargaining has made it seem like the contract of PAT is something that dropped out of the sky, written by teachers, then foisted on the district. It does not convey the district as a co-author of the contract, representing thirty to forty years of work by administrators and board members who preceded us. I have been to several bargaining sessions. I don't know if mediation is going better, but here's what I've seen. Save for two board members who sat on the periphery, I haven't seen any board members present, let alone sitting at the table. Yet board members who haven't attended talk to the press as if they know what's going on with bargaining, and they clearly don't. There is no one at the bargaining table on the district's side with the power to get a deal. No superintendent, no HR director, no legal counsel, no board member. This is very unusual. To me, that shows the district is not taking bargaining seriously. The district team has routinely counted out deadlines to the next point it could escalate rather than listen. The district team seemed eager for a crisis. So who is pulling the strings for the district? There is a consultant paid fifteen thousand dollars a month to provide this sage advice. The total billing, is it up to two hundred forty thousand dollars by now? What value are we getting for that money? This consultant, behind the scenes, has been advising all along to escalate and draw this out. Why? We're left to speculate. It helps create more invoices to the district, certainly. I think you could pay just two thousand dollars to anyone in the room right now, and they would have been able to wrap this up and get a fair district deal by this past August. The consultant is not a stakeholder in our district. When this wraps up, she's out of here. I asked the district to take greater ownership. The superintendent, HR director, and board members should represent the district at the bargaining table. It's a natural thing to do. The process is thrown out of whack when board members are not present to represent the public interest. The teachers don't want to go on strike, but they will. We parents don't want picket lines, but we will support teachers on picket lines and support them at rallies. We parents will not support paying of on-deckard more money. Please participate in bargaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Anthony, A-N-T-H-O-N-Y. I'm here to talk about my daughter's geometry class at Benson High School. I think you'll find it a refreshing change. Over the last five years, Benson math teacher Amy Slaughter and electrical engineering teacher Timothy Hirschew have developed a new freshman geometry course. Every other day, they teach from a conventional geometry curriculum. On the day following, they lead the students in designing and building projects based on the concepts learned the previous day. These projects range from riveting to building scale models to constructing small buildings. The class is designed with a built-in feedback loop, giving teachers and students immediate evidence that the concept has been learned or not, and if not, then the topic can be reviewed. This also gives students real-world experience and, of course, answers to the perennial question with higher math, when will we ever use this? These are not results that can be achieved by filling in a bubble test. When the class started, more than half of the students were working below grade level. Six weeks in, the class now has a much improved capability with an eighty-seven percent improvement in students' confidence and perception of their own performance and ability with math. Eighty-two percent of the students now say that they actively enjoy math. This class is obviously an enormous achievement, of which Benson and the district should be extraordinarily proud. There are several important lessons here for PPS. It is a sad statement on perceptions of public education to have to say, but it is critical to recognize that public schools are not businesses and should not be run as such. Anybody who tells you differently is selling something. But there are many areas of business practice that can inform effective programs, and in this case, that's certainly true for the fields of innovation, management, and marketing. Innovation, this is obviously a program the district couldn't get out of a box or buy for any money. It had to be internally generated. The teachers have been wildly successful innovators because they knew all the stakeholders. They were intimately familiar with the needs of Benson's students, their parents, their future employers, and critically, the teachers' own teaching peers. Many of these students will be going on to four-year colleges and universities, many for master's level programs. They're getting an excellent grounding for further study of advanced algebra, trigonometry, statistics, and calculus. It would be an extraordinary opportunity if these advanced classes could have a similar practical component. Management. Former Principal Carol Campbell and current Principal Curtis Wilson have shown both excellent judgment and considerable courage as managers. Teachers have to have the freedom to be able to use their training and experience. Principals need to know that they and their schools will not be penalized, not just in terms of criticism or promotion, but in terms of reduced budgets or staffing for allowing teachers to pursue innovation. Finally, marketing. Benson has clearly identified what the market wants. It has stepped up to meet a market need, and the community is clearly responding. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Houston?
Our next two speakers, Barb Macon and Jennifer Grimes.
My name is Barbara Macon, M-A-C-O-N. My name is Barbara Macon, and this is my eighth year at Roosevelt, where I love to teach. Though this coming information was never once mentioned to the DAG team, we've discovered that the long-range facilities plan calls for a college-style model of teachers having offices and sharing classrooms. I must say emphatically on behalf of myself and nearly all the colleagues I've polled that this model is antithetical to good teaching and learning for the students at Roosevelt. Being culturally responsive teachers, our classrooms visibly reflect the diversity of our students, display their work, and are a place they know they can come and connect with their teachers. As one of our nationally board-certified teachers, Josh Yadi said, "Classrooms are places where teachers build community and relationships with students outside of class time, lunch, after-school, et cetera. If a kid comes to me for office hours, I want that time to be spent in the classroom, where the tools of my trade are." I attended a high school, and I student-taught at another that had this model of shared classrooms. The walls were blank. I do not want this for Roosevelt. Guiding Principal D states that redesigns shall ensure that school-campus designs are inclusive and culturally relevant. Culturally relevant classrooms should not be generic or impersonal. Our students need a home away from home. They need enriched environments in their classes. In addition, test scores and graduation rates at Roosevelt have gone up. The teaching methods that have led to the increase are not compatible with changing rooms. We post learning targets for each lesson and unit. If we're sharing board and wall space with other teachers, we'll either be wasting time rewriting them or skip it for lack of time. We teach from bell to bell, trying not to waste a single instructional minute. If teachers have to be packing up materials, laptops, student work, we will lose instructional time and we will lose access to students in those minutes. We now use proficiency grading, which allows students to retake assessments. Students are coming in, and teachers are volunteering during lunch and after-school. How many times will students give up pursuing that retake when they don't know where to find their teachers? There's many more points. My colleagues have given me so much feedback on this, but I just will close with that. Our students are not college students. The college model is not going to work. I encourage you to contact the design groups and push for the one-teacher-one-classroom model. They seem to be keeping this a secret from everyone, and we've only discovered this, so please, each teacher needs their classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. You know that if you have additional written comments, you're welcome to submit those to the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jennifer Grimes, G-R-I-M-E-S, and I have two daughters in PPS. One daughter is in kindergarten and the other is in third grade. My focus tonight is the teacher's contract, and I urge you, the school board, PPS, and PAT, to work together and come to an agreement that will ultimately benefit our students. There are five areas that are not being adequately addressed in the negotiations. One, additional instructional hours. Two, great teachers in every classroom. Three, language that supports parent communication and engagement in order to encourage parents to be more involved in student learning. Four, language that embraces the use of trained volunteers who support teachers. Five, more teachers to reduce current workloads. The implementation of these changes would positively impact students and would increase student performance, improve our sixty-three percent graduation rate, and help close the achievement gap, particularly because currently we are out of compliance with the state for high school instructional hours, and only seventeen percent of students take a full course load. But since my kids are in elementary school, I'll focus there and on instructional hours. As you know, we have one hundred and seventy-seven instructional days that are six hours and fifteen minutes long in the elementary schools. The national average for instructional days is one hundred and eighty days, but not all days are equal. My nephew in first grade in Pennsylvania attends school twenty-five minutes longer a day than my daughters. My other nephew in Wisconsin attends fifty minutes longer each day than my daughters. If we use my nephew, who attends twenty-five minutes more a day, as an example, we learned that in one year, he attends sixteen six-hour days more of school than my children. Over twelve years, my daughters and their classmates will have one full year less education than my nephew. I know the argument has been made that more time in school won't benefit students if class sizes are too big and the teacher workload is too large. These are serious problems. My third-grade daughter has had thirty-one children in her class since first grade. This is difficult for both the students and the teachers. That said, the argument does not hold up, as many teachers are barely meeting the instructional time that PPS requires in its audit. There are also numerous free educational opportunities like SMART, additional library time, technology integration, group projects, and Mandarin and Arabic language classes that are not being implemented because there is not enough time for teachers to fit these in. Our achievement gap, third-grade reading scores, and graduation rate will improve with more instructional time, especially if it coincides with the other priorities of fully qualified teachers, increased parent engagement, trained volunteers, and more teachers. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our last two speakers, Carmen Rubio and Bernie Bottomly.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Rubio, and I'm the Executive Director of the Latino Network, a nonprofit that works to advance Latino youth and families in Multnomah County. I'm also here as the co-chair of the Coalition of Communities of Color, representing the Coalition and its twenty-plus organizational members here tonight. I also have two nieces and one nephew living with me, attending Portland Public Schools in elementary and middle school. The CCC is an alliance of culturally-specific, community-based organizations with representation from six communities of color: African, African-American, Asian and Pacific Islander, Latino, Native American, and Slavic. My colleagues and I urge you to keep a central focus on the most vulnerable individuals in this set of adult contract negotiations: the children of Portland Public Schools, and in particular, those who have been long underserved by the district. The CCC prioritizes education and recognizes that racial educational inequities harm all students. We believe that a successful contract provides an opportunity to further educational outcomes for all students by remaining focused on increasing outcomes for our most underserved students. These are students of color, immigrant and refugee students, and English-language learning students. In this light, we urge the board to take the required leadership that will end disparities for those students whom have long been underserved. The district's approach to a rapidly-changing demographic have not kept up with the need. The status quo is not acceptable. With this in mind, we urge you to keep the following values clearly front and center as you continue these critical negotiations. First, recognize and leverage the racial educational equity work that has been undertaken thus far. While there is work to be done to ensure increased educational outcomes for underserved students, we should take advantage of the good work invested by hundreds of community members, parents, and stakeholders over decades, including the racial equity, educational equity policy, and utilization of a racial equity lens in budgeting, as examples. Next, we'd like to see continued differentiation of district resources based on inequities longstanding in PPS to advance racial equity, or educational equity. Not all students, or consider the unique strengths and challenges of unique communities. Not all students of color, immigrant and refugee students, or ELL students are alike or face the same kinds of barriers. We urge you to prioritize the increased hiring, retention, and promotion of teachers of color so that our students enter schools where teachers and staff look like the students and understand their culture, and students can see themselves in successful leadership positions. Portland's demographics are rapidly changing. PPS is currently almost half students of color, but our teacher population does not reflect our student diversity. The district must utilize existing opportunities to its fullest extent to conduct early hiring and retention and take steps to remove barriers that put us at a hiring disadvantage with other districts, and also remove barriers to retaining the best content-qualified and talented teachers at PPS. May I finish up?
Wrap that up?
Yes. So in closing, I just want to say that the Coalition appreciates the challenges presented on all sides of the issue, and our communities have a long history of activism, both within education and within labor, so it's precisely for these reasons that we urge you, our elected leaders, to take leadership, to engage in good faith, and advance educational outcomes for all students.
Superintendent Smith, members of the committee, Bernie Bottomly with the Portland Business Alliance, B-O-T-T-O-M-L-Y. I'll just note that I'm a graduate of MLC. I heard good praise for MLC, so I had a good experience there. As you know, the Alliance is a longtime supporter of Portland Schools. Over many years, we've backed just about every school bond or operating levy measure that's been placed on the ballot. The Alliance, in fact, even engineered an increase in business income taxes some years ago to keep schools open when funding was at critically low levels. The Alliance's vision for Portland Schools is that all students deserve equal opportunity for success regardless of their background, so they have a real chance to reach their full potential and ultimately hold jobs that can support them and their families. But with a graduation rate of sixty-two percent and unacceptably low achievement levels, it's clear that Portland Schools is falling short of giving our students the education they deserve. Something needs to change. The current contract discussions represent an opportunity to dramatically improve the education experiences of our kids. We believe the negotiations should be driven by doing what is best for our kids. And that includes, in addition, I would second some of the comments that my colleague made about some of the changes that need to happen, but in addition to that, improving achievement for all students regardless of ethnicity and household income, graduating more students who are responsible citizens and prepared to take the next step in life, strengthening technical and career education, and assuring that struggling students have access to the very best teaching. The current labor contract unfortunately makes reaching those goals extremely difficult. While other districts around the metro region have adopted state-of-the-art approaches to improving teaching, Portland students are held back by a labor contract that discourages innovation and fresh ideas. We applaud the board's commitment and resolve to negotiate a contract that puts the needs of our kids first. We appreciate that the board has come to the table with real offers and real solutions to address the challenges we face, including raising teacher salaries and extending the school year. You have been willing to discuss alternatives, and you have made concessions in an effort to move the talks forward. Unfortunately, the union has not reciprocated. They have declined offers to meet, they have made no responsible counteroffers to district proposals, and they have brought nothing to the table of any substance to bring the parties closer together. It is not possible to negotiate when only one side is coming to the table with the goal of settling. It is not fair to the kids or to the community to continue to maintain the facade that real negotiations are happening when, in fact, they are not. It is not reasonable to extend negotiations when only one side is making concessions. For this reason, the Alliance encourages the board to continue to be firm and resolute in its approach to these negotiations and hold fast to the principles that they have set forth, to do what is best for kids and our community. If no substantive and responsive offers are forthcoming from the union, we encourage the board to take the necessary steps to declare an impasse and to move the process forward towards resolution in the best interests of the kids and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All those who aim to testify and share your thoughts, concerns, and ideas. Before we move on to the next agenda item, the discussion of the accountability, the discussion of the Bond Accountability Committee report, there is a resolution that we are going to consider, and I'm going to turn it over to, if somebody could, I don't have the resolution number in front of me, I know, sorry.
Four-eight-three-seven.
So the board will now consider Resolution 4387.
Four-eight-three-seven.
I'm sorry, four-eight-three-seven. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved, second.
Director Regan moves to adopt Resolution 4837. Director Adkins seconds. And with that, I'll turn it over to Director Regan.
So over the weekend, Director Adkins and I spent quite a bit of time putting together a resolution that basically states where we're at in terms of teacher contract negotiations, and we have just shared that with our colleagues, and we request that we be able to read this into the record. So we're going to sort of tag team on this. So it's Resolution Number 4837, titled "Board Support for the Teacher's Contract: Our Students and Community Deserve." A, this recitals, A. "We, the members of the Portland School Board, know that equitable and high-performing schools are essential to Portland's economic health and quality of life today in are essential to Portland's economic health and quality of life today and in the future. We honor the teachers in our schools who have committed their knowledge, skills, and life's work to educating, inspiring, and supporting our students. B. Members of this school board are unpaid elected public servants who set a strategic vision for the school district, hire and manage our superintendent, provide fiscal oversight, and, most important, work to ensure that our forty-eight thousand students receive a quality education. Like our teachers and all school district staff, we serve because we believe in public education and we believe we can make a positive difference for our students. C. The Portland School Board assumes the responsibility of bargaining with our teachers' union in good faith. We take that responsibility very seriously. We are committed to providing a contract that ensures competitive salaries, comprehensive healthcare, and fair working conditions. D. Since September two thousand and twelve, the school district's professional bargaining team has successfully reached agreement on new contracts with every other Portland Public School employee union. Bargaining with the Portland Association of Teachers started more than two hundred days ago, but the two sides are still far apart on core issues. School board members are becoming concerned that the situation may be headed for impasse. We want to move forward in timely manner. That means bringing negotiations to a successful conclusion and doing it soon.
E. We are committed to signing a teacher contract that our students and community deserve. That means making changes to the current contract so that all students can attain high academic standards regardless of race or class. Our goals include: a contract that adds more school days to the school year and allows schools to stay open longer each day so that students have more time to learn; a financially responsible contract that enables Portland Public Schools to reduce class sizes and teacher workload by hiring more teachers; a contract that gives our schools the ability to ensure all students have a great teacher in their classrooms. We want to do this by recruiting the best teachers available, prioritizing competence as defined by state law when teachers are assigned, and diversifying our workforce to include more bilingual and minority teachers, as well as hard-to-find higher-level math and science teachers; a contract that allows students and parents more opportunity to work collaboratively with all teachers in the classroom, in parent conferences, and during school events; a contract that increases or maintains planning time for teachers; a contract that allows us to quickly provide mentoring and support to teachers who struggle or allows us to move teachers out of the classroom if necessary; a contract that focuses on core labor management issues such as wages and benefits so that our students and community, as well as our teachers, can participate in broader conversations about educational vision and advocacy.
F. We believe our proposal is both fair and sustainable. On salary and benefits, our bargaining team has come to the table with a competitive compensation package. Our latest offer, which our team presented at last week's mediation session, would provide cost of living increases totaling five percent over a three-year contract for all twenty-eight-hundred PAT members. This would keep salaries competitive with Portland area school districts. In addition, in our effort to increase instructional time for students, we offered a one percent raise for all teachers if they agreed to work three more instructional days. On top of this, about half of our teachers would continue to receive automatic annual step or seniority increases, which equal a salary increase of two to five percent each year. These teachers would receive a total raise over three years of more than twelve percent. We have also proposed joining other school districts in Oregon who have phased out early retirement benefits. This alone would free up to five-point-three million dollars per year, equivalent to fifty-eight teaching positions, to support lower class sizes and student programs when fully implemented. With limited resources, our priority is to pay teachers who are currently teaching in our schools. In terms of health insurance, teachers currently pay a hundred and twenty dollars per month for their coverage, while the school district pays one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and thirty-two cents per month per teacher. The school district contribution of over fourteen-hundred dollars is three-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars more per month, per employee, than we provide for any other employee group. We are proposing to cap the Portland Public School contribution in the first year at its current level. We would increase this contribution by two percent in each of the next two years. Our goal is to work collaboratively with our teachers to select healthcare plans that are less costly while still providing excellent benefits. For employees other than teachers, Portland Public Schools has had a healthcare contribution in place for years, allowing the school district to offer comprehensive yet reasonably-priced plans with cost savings that ultimately translate to more teachers and smaller class sizes. G. In addition to salary and benefits, our proposal seeks to change outdated and overly restrictive contract rules that are a barrier to student achievement. First, regarding the issue of teacher hiring and placement, the current contract has provisions that make it difficult for Portland Public Schools to get out in the market early to hire great teachers before they are scooped up by other districts. Our proposal would reduce reviews of internal job candidates to one round instead of three, bringing us into line with other school districts in Oregon. This would give current teachers a fair opportunity to compete while providing PPS with the opportunity to diversify our workforce by hiring in-demand bilingual and minority teachers, as well as higher-level math and science teachers. For teacher transfers from one school to another, the current contract prioritizes seniority above all else. Our proposal would bring Portland Public Schools in line with other school districts by using the state's definition for teacher competence. This would require a teacher to have recent teaching experience or training in the subject or grade level within the last five years and a teaching certificate in the subject area. Again, our goal is to ensure that our contract allows students to have the best teacher in every classroom. In terms of student instructional time, outdated contract rules unduly limit access to the teaching students need. Our contract proposal would add three instructional days to the school year, increasing classroom time to support student achievement, reduce the dropout rate, and graduate more students prepared for college and careers.
H. The PAT proposal includes a preamble that speaks to our shared values for our schools and students. It is an excellent statement, but it does not belong in a labor contract. The preamble calls for more electives for students, including music, art, physical education, libraries, and world languages. We agree, and would add career and technical education to the list as well. The preamble calls for using standardized testing as only one tool for assessment of students, for equity and allocation of resources to high-poverty schools, and for more wraparound support services for students. Again, we agree. I. The preamble also calls for reduced class sizes and workloads. Like teachers and parents, we are deeply concerned about teacher workload and class size. In fact, the Board has acted on this concern. This year, as a result of additional state and local funding and continued cost containment measures, PPS added more than one-hundred-and-twenty staff members directly into schools to reduce class sizes. We added educational assistants and other staff at sixty-eight schools to relieve teachers of non-instructional duties, reducing workload. We have gone out to voters, seeking school levies to pay for additional teaching positions and thus reduce class sizes and teacher workloads. Our current levy is bringing in more than fifty million dollars per year, which equates to approximately five-hundred-and-fifty teaching positions, and has resulted in lower class sizes than many of our neighboring districts. In fact, Portland's student-teacher ratios are lower than in Beaverton, Hillsborough, and Salem-Kaiser. In the last regular legislative session, we partnered with PAT to draft and support legislation that reforms state property tax law to take the portion of voter-approved school levy funds that are now diverted to urban renewal and redirect them back to schools. Based on this new law, we are hoping to renew our local option as early as the spring, which would add as much as four-point-five million dollars a year to PPS's budget. This would add another fifty teachers, again reducing class sizes.
K. To formally address concerns around workload and class size, our bargaining team has proposed a collaborative work group of teachers and Portland Public School representatives to work together on this issue outside of contract negotiations. The work group would collaboratively look at the challenges around workload and class size and would bring forth proposals that would meet student needs. We believe a collaborative work group, similar to the union-school district work group that successfully worked to design the new teacher evaluation, is the best way evaluation, is the best way to tackle this issue. Resolution number one: The Board reaffirms our commitment to reach a negotiated agreement with the PAT that helps our schools provide the best and most effective educational environment for our students. A prolonged contract negotiations process disrupts schools and does a disservice to our students, families, and teachers. The school district and the Teachers Association need to reach common ground in the interest of better serving our students. We direct our bargaining representatives to continue using all of the means at their disposal to reach a contract agreement in a timely manner.
Two. The Board directs its bargaining team to continue to seek agreement from the PAT to develop a collaborative process outside of bargaining to address the issues of workload and class size. Three. The Board's highest priority is to increase our graduation rate with students ready for college and careers. We believe that our current proposal provides strong and competitive salary and benefits, as well as fair working conditions for our teachers. By removing the restrictive and outdated provisions of the contract that are impediments to student success, we believe we will have the Teachers Association contract that our students and community deserve.
Thank you. Any other Board discussion? Director Buehl?
We're going to have a vote on this, is that it?
Yes.
I'm not going to be able to vote for this, and the reason is simple. I don't believe that we're actually using every measure we can to settle the contract. I just don't think that that is really, truly representing our position. There's all sorts of good stuff in here that I think does carefully and does represent our position, which I could really support. So it's not because there's not supportive stuff in here. I could go line by line. I don't think my colleagues would allow me to do that, and I think they'd probably throw me off the place. I could go line by line on stuff and say, "Well, this isn't exactly correct in my opinion," and so forth. But really what it comes down to is I don't think that we're actually bargaining in good faith. We're not using everything at our disposal to get a contract and to sit down and try and work through the problems. I just don't believe that's the case, and since this says that it is the case, I won't be able to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Discussion? Okay. The Board will now vote on Resolution four-eight-three-seven. The Board will now consider Resolution four-eight-three-seven, "Board Support for the Teacher's Contract: Our Students and Community Deserve." All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Resolution four-eight-three-seven is approved by a vote of six to one. At this time, we will now move on to the Bond Accountability Committee. The Board is excited to hear the report this evening from the Bond Accountability Committee. We'd like to thank both Mr. Spellman and Mr. Peterson for being here with us this evening. Welcome. I should mention that this is a quarterly report that you will provide us, despite your meeting more frequently than quarterly, but we thank you for being here.
Thank you. Co-chair Belial, co-chair Knowles, Board, and Superintendent Smith. Just briefly, I want to restate maybe for the public more than you what our role is. We are a committee of seven, of independent professionals who are charged with observing the implementation of the bond program and reporting to you both the good and the areas for improvement. So that's why we're here. We met on October sixteenth at Wilson High School and got a full briefing from the staff, and I want to, again, I've said this each time I've been here, I want to underline how impressed we are with the transparency and professionalism of your staff working on the bond program. The highlight of the meeting was the report that the summer two thousand and thirteen work was complete. It's under budget, and all the schools opened timely. This is a relatively small part of the bond program, but it was about sixteen million dollars of work performed over the summer, and that is, that is not a trivial exercise. So this is a good sign. This shows that the staff has good systems in place and good people managing the work. I was also impressed to hear that although things went really well, they've engaged in a lessons-learned process so that they can improve for next year. There'll be twelve schools worked on next summer. There are three design teams working on those projects as we speak. The design teams for Roosevelt and Franklin High Schools are very active, and I know some of you have been involved in that. There've been seven or eight Design Advisory Group meetings plus open houses, et cetera, and that process is still going on. Momentarily, the RFP process for selection of your construction manager general contractors for those high schools, that process is underway. So the full team will be on board here, I think the schedule says, by the end of January, so we can really start seeing this team in action, this group. We've also provided input to your performance auditors as they've been developing their work plan, and they've expressed to us that they want to work very closely with us. A few kind of key issues, I think. We had mentioned, I think the first time we came here, that we were concerned about how the budget was being reported, that it was not deliberately non-transparent, but it was non-transparent. The staff has worked diligently on that, and we're now fully satisfied with the way they're presenting the budget. Even we can understand it, so we think that maybe the public can too. Communications were also a struggle early on, largely because that area had not been fully staffed up. Now, has-been, the website is, again, very transparent, minutes of all of these meetings, of their schedules, of their budgets, of their... We're very satisfied with what's been done in that area. Equity, I want to touch on two pieces with regard to equity. One relates to the student participation. We would ask that, well, we believe that the staff has done what they've been asked to do, which is essentially get the consultants and ultimately the contractors involved in biz-net, biz-connect, excuse me. And some students have got involved, but really, in our judgment, really not enough. And I don't believe that's the fault of the consultants or the contractors. I think we need some help from the education side of the district to get students connected. This is a wonderful opportunity. What we didn't know when we had our meeting was that both high school design teams have gone into the classrooms in both cases, largely to get feedback from students, but nevertheless, that engages students in the process, and that's really a powerful thing. And we'd like to see a lot more than that, and I know you would too. The involvement of minority, women-owned, emerging small businesses, we have, and the district has established an aspirational goal of eighteen percent, and we're well short of that on the work that's been done to date. We bring that to you not to be critical of staff or the process. In the summer work, which is subject to the bid process, I think the district is, has some legal constraints as to what it can do. And I think, in our report, I think we show eight-point-two percent. I believe that's increased since, but nevertheless, it's not close to the eighteen percent. So we bring that as an observation, and almost, I think in our first report, we warned you that this would likely happen, and it's a function of the delivery system rather than anything that the district has done. Lastly, we want to touch on schedule. Lastly, we want to touch on schedule a little bit. We, as we said at the outset, the budget was maybe a little less than transparent. The schedule is a little less than transparent. And again, this is not a criticism. This is a big program, shall we say. And getting into the detail of all of these mini-schedules and seeing the master schedule is very difficult to do, and we'll never be able to do that. But nevertheless, we've asked staff to present to us the kind of differentials from meeting to meeting, as they have with the budget, and they've committed to do that, and that'll be very helpful. We still have concerns, though, over the schedule, and Tom's going to speak to that in a second, but the EdSpecs product has not yet been approved. The high school size question isn't resolved. It's going to be difficult to get a master plan if we don't know what we're building. The master plans must be complete and approved by the board. I think you've asked for schematic design to be brought and approved by the board, and there are really, there are some critical linear milestone deadlines coming up. And that's not to say we've missed anything critical at this point, but it's kind of raising the red flag. I'm going to ask Tom to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I'd also like to express my appreciation for the staff as well. They've done an excellent job this summer. You've got a great team of individuals there, and I'm very confident in their ability. So that's good, I just want you to know that. Just briefly, I also want to comment on the equity issue. And I would say, given the type of work that was bid this summer and not having the same capabilities to set goals like I do at the port, you did pretty well at 8 percent. So the 8 percent is a high goal, and I think when you move into the negotiated work, you have tremendous opportunities to do much better than 18 percent, which has been my experience at the port. I think on our HQ project, we had, of the available work, we were at like 40 percent. I mean, so, but it's because we're able to sit down with the contractor and work out strategies in a way that opens up those opportunities. That's hard to do in the hard bid world. So I think you're going to see an improvement going forward, even though you didn't hit 18 percent. Eight's not bad for what you accomplished this year, so. And then, specific to the schedule, I kind of have the same concerns, and if you recall, we met with staff last spring, just to get a better understanding of the schedule and how it's all going to come together. And at that time, you know, my assessment was, this is a very ambitious schedule. There are a lot of things that need to fall into place for this to happen. And so far, things are going pretty well, but I was just comparing notes from the last time we talked about it, and the master plan has already slipped from what the original schedule was. And although it's, you know, there's always a term we call float that allows for some of that, we're getting at the point now where the consequence of not hitting some of these key targets could have some serious implications on the team's ability to bring this, keep this thing on schedule. And so, the two areas of concern for me are master planning and things like that. These are areas that we, at the port, also have challenges with, and they're really important, but at the same time, if you don't get them pinned down, the staff can't really move forward with the next step. So it's really important to get that nailed down in the next few weeks or whenever it's becoming before you, because it will have an impact on their ability to keep the project going forward. So as I say, you know, as we're about to start the selection process for the contractors, and once you bring the contractors on board, all of a sudden, the intensity and the pressure really ramps up. You know, as I put it, the train is on the track, and you're headed down the road, or the railroad, and it's hard to derail it. If you do, there's big consequences. And so, you know, you're about to make a big step here, and I really can't emphasize enough how important it is to make sure those decisions get made in a timely manner. That's all I have to offer.
Thank you both.
Yep.
I'm going to open it up to colleagues in case they have questions or comments. Director Buell?
Thank you for your reports, and I definitely appreciate when you're kind of calling things to our attention. The one in particular that I had noted also was the student participation piece. And I know that, I think after the summer work, when we had some of the contractors in and we were asking questions about a variety of things, I had been a little bit surprised also by the responses around student participation. I think one of them said, "Oh, we had one student come and job shatter me," or something. And so I think that there may just be a little bit of a miss in terms of what our expectations were versus what's happening, and I don't know if we could potentially, I mean, we could either have a discussion and set out the expectations of what we meant when we said student participation, or it sounds like you're suggesting that maybe the academic team take a look at that and come back to us with expectations, and either way, I think would be great. But I think right now, I would agree that that feels like a miss, and it's such an amazing opportunity for our kids, so just wanted to hand that back to you.
Yeah, and we've caught that suggestion.
We'll do a discussion with the educational team about how we ramp that up. And it's really about supporting and connecting is a lot of what our piece is, and we're looking at how we do that.
Absolutely. And once the CMGCs are on board, just like the design teams, there's huge opportunities. They'll all be really eager to engage with students, so it would be really a shame to miss that opportunity.
And so, can you bring that back to us? Yes. Okay. Because I know I had kind of envisioned some apprenticeships and just a variety of much more hands-on substantive participation. Great, thanks.
Same thing I have.
Just, I just wanted to, I think on behalf of all of us, reiterate our thanks for your work. It's, I think we're very lucky to have the group caliber that you have, and we're counting on you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
We're now going to move on to our next item on our agenda, which is District-Wide Boundary Review. Superintendent Smith?
So yes, I will invite, we've got a large team that actually is coming up to the podium. And as you know, last May, we set in motion two processes. One, a review of our enrollment and transfer policies, and secondly, a district-wide review of our boundaries, which formerly we've tackled in more cluster-based units. We said in order to really do this and do it well, we needed to look at the entire district. So I will introduce Judy Brennan, who is our Director of Enrollment, and John Isaacs, who's Senior Policy Advisor, who will then introduce partners that we're bringing before you tonight, who are going to engage in this process with us. So over to you, Judy and John.
Good evening, and thank you. And I'm just going to start with a broad enrollment frame very briefly, just to set the context. As I'm sure you're aware, Portland Public Schools is a growing enrollment district. I just can't say that enough. Fourth year in a row, more than nearly 600 additional students this year over last year, and that deserves a big yay. Secondly, funding has improved from last year to this year. We have a better allocation from the state, arts tax, and a change in the equity formula, all of which are bringing more teachers into our buildings, and that's a double yay. All of that also, though, more kids and more teachers accelerates our need for more classroom space. So the uh-oh that comes from this is even when all of these great things are happening, our schools, our buildings, aren't necessarily accommodating the growth of the way we need it to. And all of that puts into timely context what we're going to be talking about tonight, which is bringing forward a team to co-convene a process to look at our broad district boundary-related issues and getting some resolution to them. So John's going to talk about that a little more.
Okay, thank you. Again, John Isaacs, Senior Policy Advisor. So if you recall, in May, we provided the board with an update regarding District-Wide Boundary Review. We informed you that currently there are many PPS schools operating outside target enrollment ranges, just as Judy described, and we let you know that we would be coming forth with, to inform you of the clear direction we'd be taking on District-Wide Boundary Review in the fall, and that's what we're here to do today. Back then, our initial thinking was that the 2012 long-range facility planning process would serve as a template for this effort, and that planning partners such as the City of Portland Metro and Portland State University would be called together with other community partners and education leaders to develop draft guidelines for school size and grade configurations, as well as protocols for when and how to adjust boundaries and program locations. The Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer would play a role in this process as well. So that was our initial thinking. And we also know that we have been quite deliberate. Because this is such a big, important undertaking, we wanted to make sure we got it right and we felt good about the direction we were headed. So today, we're very excited to have with us here, and I want to just do an initial introduction and then allow them the opportunity to introduce themselves more fully when they present and answer your questions. Three representatives of the Portland State University Mark Hatfield School of Government, Center for Public Service, who we will be entering into a partnership with to co-manage a District-Wide Boundary Review process. And with us, we have Phil Keisling, who's the Director of the Center for Public Service, who will be the principal investigator in this partnership. Don't need to introduce him, former Secretary of State. He became Director of the Center for Public Service in July 2010. We also have Wendy Willis, who will be the lead on stakeholders and interviews. Wendy is the Executive Director of the Policy Consensus Initiative, which is a national nonprofit dedicated to collaborative and democratic governance, and she's the Director of Civic Engagement at the National Policy Consensus Center at Portland State University. And then, lastly, we have Shannon Grisbowski, who will be the Project Manager and Lead for Data Collection and Analysis. Shannon's a fellow with the center, and she has coordinated strategic planning, community engagement, and evaluation projects for several agencies, including the Oregon Department of Education and Multnomah County. So why are we entering into this partnership with the Center for Public Service? As we were developing our recommendations and our plan for moving forward on this, a few considerations and challenges stood out. First, the enormity of the undertaking. It's a citywide process that will potentially impact every neighborhood and every school community. It needs to take into consideration other city plans, such as the Portland Plan, and it will require the engagement and management of many different stakeholders with differing interests and perspectives. And it's going to require expertise such as data analysis, mapping, and modeling. Second, we know that boundary review and change, even at an individual school, is historically a very challenging task, and so coming to a boundary change decision is often very, can be contentious with trade-offs having to be made between parents and neighborhoods. And this dynamic will obviously be heightened in a citywide process. Third, to be successful, this process will require two outcomes: an updated citywide school boundary map and a recommendation for how PPS can undergo District-Wide Boundary Review routinely in a transparent, predictable manner. So we realized that to address these challenges, we needed to find a third-party partner to provide us the following expertise and assets: process management capacity and expertise, independent credibility with the entire Portland community, expertise in reaching policy decisions involving many different stakeholders and interests with different perspectives, expertise with data projections, planning, and mapping, and a track record of success solving tough problems with innovative public policy solutions. This led us to approach the PSU Center for Public Service. We firmly believe they are the only organization that brings this incredibly unique set of expertise and assets to PPS for this very unique challenge. You have the scope of work that's been presented, and with that, I want to bring up the team, and we'll let them replace us here at the podium to go through that scope of work, introduce themselves more fully, and answer any questions you might have. And then we'll also be available for any questions as well, once they're done.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Phil Keisling. As John mentioned, I'm Director for the Center for Public Service. First of all, I want to just thank you all for this opportunity to work with you in partnership on this project. It is challenging. It is interesting. And as one of my colleagues says, it's a wicked challenge of great complexity. But those are exactly more and more of the challenges we face in the world of public service. I want to just real briefly give the broad framework, then give Wendy a chance to talk about the public outreach and engagement part of it, which I think is a real essential part, not just a Phase One, but what we would project going forward, and then let Shannon finish up and just tell you a little bit about how the project will go forward. As John has mentioned, there's two real key deliverables here. One is, quite honestly, a map at some point that gets produced out of this process. But the other is an ongoing framework that lets not only you, but your successors for years and years to come, to approach this problem in a way that people in the community believes has credibility and integrity to it. It's important to look at some underlying principles of how we go about doing the work. This is not something that we would own. We are in partnership, and in fact, ultimately, we can't avoid the fact this is a political process. This board will have to make choices, but our job is to help kind of frame that and assist you in that. And the notion of co-production is absolutely key. Again, it's important to recognize that there are so many people that have expertise, people that work for the district, the people who are parents in the district, people who are citizens of the entire community, et cetera. It also has to be grounded, of course, in the values that you've expressed and that the community has expressed: values of equity, values of inclusion, values of looking at every child and the importance of giving everybody an access to a great education. So we have proposed in this a Phase One set of deliverables. We have also said that if you choose to continue to have us be part of this, and there will be a moment after Phase One to assess that, how we might today look at Phase Two and Phase Three, but anything that far out is a little bit less clear. But before you tonight is what Phase One would be about, and it consists of three deliverables. The first has to do with a contextual assessment and framework recommendations, where we look at data collection and analysis, the information that's available, what isn't, do an inventory, look at where there's gaps, look at peer districts. The second is stakeholder interviews and focus groups, where we get out and start talking to people, not the end of this process, but really just the beginning. Talk to them about how to go about continuing then to reach out to the community for the bulk of the time. And the third, of course, is recommending a decision-making framework to use, to then enter into Phase Two, again, whether we're part of this or not, that's capable of being used, as we point out in here, for 20 to 30 years and maybe even beyond. So this work would commence very soon, and we would look to get it finished within a three-month period of time. It's an ambitious schedule. We know we also have holidays, but we think that's important to then give time to those other phases, the bulk of it being, of course, the community outreach and the engagement. So with that, I'd like to turn it over briefly to my colleague Wendy Willis to talk a little bit about that key part, beginning of which is the second deliverable in this phase, and she can tell you a little bit more about that. Wendy?
Great, thank you, Phil. Thank you very much for inviting us here to talk with you about this tonight. One, as Phil mentioned, right now, we're hoping to sort of approach the public involvement and engagement process in sort of concentric circles. So to begin with people who are very close to this process, have thought about it a lot already, have a lot of established values about what should go into a long-range boundary plan for the district. So we'll spend the next three months starting with those values and then moving outward to say, "How do you engage the public in a way that asks them to approximate some of the trade-offs that you all are going to need to make down the road, and what are the values that need to come to bear on that?" Rather than coming to the public with, "Here's a map," or "Here's a proposed map, how do you react to that?" Really start at the values level, including in this very first process, where we'll be doing assessments, interviews with any of you who want to participate, many other people who have thought about this over the last few months. At that point, we should, as you know, in these assessment processes, you start to, suddenly the universe starts to become a little bit more clear on where the difficult points are, where the rub is. And so, once that becomes better established, then we will come, we'd come back and say, "These are the places where we think you really need to engage stakeholders and the public in these particular ways." We've developed a number of ways of working with the public We've developed a number of ways of working with the public around the state of Oregon, and many of the, and those would be at the disposal of the district if you chose to do that, or we'd just make recommendations to you on what you might do to engage stakeholders and the public over, over the months between now and the time both the long-range framework and the map come to, come to be. So we look forward to working with any of you. You can find us, if, I mean, at any point, I hope that we'd be happy to talk to anybody about what their thoughts are and who we should be talking to, to make this as durable as possible.
I'm Shannon Grisbowski, and as Phil briefly mentioned, we see this as a, as three mini projects within the first phase. And so I will take responsibility for coordinating those different components. We're going to be building small teams of faculty and staff and students to work on each of the different components. So we'll have a data collection and analysis team who will kind of take stock of the current condition of the district, where we're starting with, what data we have, what data we're lacking, and where we, what additional information we need in order to move forward. Wendy will be leading the stakeholder interview and focus groups, team that we mentioned, and then we've got additional faculty and staff who will be kind of designing the decision-making framework that we'll then use to, to present before we come to a Phase Two discussion. So, so my role will then be to coordinate those different components, make sure we're on track, and make sure we're meeting our timelines and deliverables that we've set forth.
Thank you. Love to answer any questions you might have.
I'm sure we have some.
We'd be disappointed if you didn't.
I do have some comments that I can say.
I'm, um, I'm a go. Let me see if I can understand this. You're, you're going to work with us in coming up with boundary, actual boundary plan?
We will, the process, if-
I mean, when you say the map, is that an actual boundary map?
Not in this, not in this deliverable. We will be working with the district first to create a framework, to go out and gather the information that's value-based, that, that is a huge effort of getting input about what ought to go into that. And then we would anticipate that in the fall of 2014, roughly a year from now, a group that would have ownership that we think would emerge from this process would put forward a plan. Now, if we continue to work with the district on this, we would be obviously intimately involved in that. But this particular deliverable tonight that we're talking about launches us towards that, but will not in and of itself produce a map.
But the map you're going to, that you talk about producing is a map of what then?
At a certain point, this board will need to adopt district boundaries throughout the district for all of the schools.
So you have three, three months, and you're going to make a map?
No, 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 no.
You're going to make a map, a map down the line?
Right. There's a, we've outlined a three-phase approach to this. This is just the first phase, after which we will have a discussion as to whether you would even want to proceed with us, or take other, other courses to do that. But we hope that the work that we do will make you comfortable with having us continue down this course. We would then, in Phase Two, with the work that Wendy, in particular, her team will be working on, we'll be reaching out to the district in partnership with, with you all to gather the input and the information that is necessary, we believe, so that when a map is produced in the fall of 2014 on this timeline, that it is seen as being grounded in important and widely-held values in the district, that the process of getting the map seems to have integrity to it. And while there will be disagreements about it, there always will, I've had a little bit of experience when I did legislative redistricting about 20 years ago, not everybody is, is delighted with a given map. But if you have done that process leading up to it, well, you have a far greater chance of having whatever decision this board makes be one that is, is seen as having integrity by, by the broad community.
So basically, you're, what you're doing is setting up a plan for us to come up with the boundaries?
Inevitably, this is, is, is the decision that this elected board must make, not unelected.
No, but I mean, the plan would be, you're putting forth a plan that we would then use?
Yes, that we hope would-
How, how would you integrate that with our disorganized system of education in this? I mean, are we K-8, are we middle school, where are we going, are we da-da-da, what are our programs, are we test-oriented, are we not? Well, for me, I felt, I felt all along, for the last couple of years that I've been involved, that we really need to straighten that out before we go messing around with the boundaries. So can you, how would, I mean, we're just, we're not having that straightened out in three months. I mean, the values are, we want to educate each child, I could tell you the values right now, but the, the idea that, where are we versus the boundaries, are you going to look at that at all? Is that your plan? I mean, for me, that's the key thing.
And I'll let others weigh in as well on this. You have what is probably best described as a multivariate equation in this, where many, many things are at work. We met, for example, with the SACIT group to discuss this with them and get their input. It was very, very valuable and helpful. They, of course, are looking at the whole issue of enrollment and transfer policy, which also is part of this. You later tonight will have a discussion, as I understand it, of the optimal size of a high school and structure of program. We could, we could wait for all of that to kind of get settled out and finally done, but I think this reflects launching a process that respects and understands that all those things are going on, and then again, project forward to September of 2014. You will have to make the judgment call as to whether it's time for the district to adopt a map, much less a long-term district-wide boundary framework. But in the meantime, we want to work with you to identify those issues, recognize how they factor in, and try to, to help the district get to the point where they at least can make a, an informed decision down the road as to that.
So basically-
You're absolutely right, it's very, very complex, wicked.
You're putting together the plan that'll allow us to take those complexities into account.
Yeah.
Is that a way of looking at it?
I think that is our hope. That is exactly what we strive to do.
And then the phase, the next three months, where we're going to have the contacts made? Is that it?
So what we'll-
Is your plan, I mean, you know, good luck on that, but I mean-
I think some of the things that you're, the complexities that you're talking about, some of which we're aware of and some of which we're just starting to learn about. So those will be some of the interviews that happen in this first phase. And so, in three months from now, to say, "Look, these are the things that impact, will have impact on your decision about long-term boundary changes and short-term boundary changes." And, and that these are the people who are engaged in that conversation. And that'll be, I think, a lot of what Shannon will do, will look at some of that, that context. And then with that information, then it puts you all in the position to make some decisions about how you want to proceed, or if you want to proceed now or later.
First of all, let me say thank you very much for being here tonight. We really appreciate this. And taking on boundaries is, I think, our gnarliest, I wouldn't say wicked, I'd say gnarly, gnarliest job here, and I'm really pleased that you all are going to be involved in that. I am curious about what the relationship with SACIT is, and so you guys can speak to that and then, but I also think that this is the kind of thing that we really do need, because just like when we did our long-range facilities plan, it's the ability to pull the community together in a, in a process that they're familiar with, that really adds credibility to the result in the end, and allows the community to get behind that, because they know that there's been a process and that we have followed that process. And I think it's helpful when we're trying to make these very difficult decisions, and nothing, I don't think, is more difficult than a boundary decision when you have so many families who are so invested in their neighborhood schools and there can be changes there. So those are huge decisions for us and very, very difficult for families, and we understand that. So I really appreciate you guys coming forward and helping us try and find a path forward on this gnarly issue. Thank you.
Does somebody want to talk about student, student assignment-
Superintendent's-
Superintendent's Advisory Committee on Enrollment and Transfer, which is what we're calling SACIT. Somebody want to talk about that? As I stumble through it.
So, and, we're fortunate that Jason Tremblay, he's SACIT co-chair, is right in the room. Here, I'm just going to sit on your lap. This is a team effort. So what we foresee is that SACIT will continue with their deep dive into the enrollment and transfer piece, but they've been clear from day one that you can't do one of these elements without the other. So that they, there may be times when there's deep investigation in either area. We expect SACIT members to be a part of both the planning, the convening, and the participation along the way. And then, at some point, they'll probably come back together. So the timeframe that they've proposed, which we support, is likely to be a similar timeframe for when you would be seeing SACIT's recommendations on changes to enrollment and transfer policy. So that we don't change a policy but leave boundaries that don't support it, or we don't change boundaries in the school configurations and then have a transfer policy that lets you, that undermines it. It's a gnarly challenge, and I appreciate that new labeling. Thanks for the chair.
Sure.
So I want to just comment on a couple of the things that were mentioned during your presentation that I wanted to, I, really resonated with me, and I want to make sure that, that we highlight those. One is really sort of stakeholder engagement early and often. One of the criticisms that we've had over the past has been, ideas already exist, and now we're going to go after the fact and present those to stakeholders and try to get feedback at that point. That doesn't work during our Jefferson Cluster enrollment conversation last year. That was a very clear message that community gave back to us, and I think it's, it's really refreshing to hear, in fact, we have this intentional process. And it isn't a, "Let's see what you think of this idea," which is oftentimes creates a process issue versus, versus a content conversation. The other thing, too, is, is this idea of starting at the values level, which is, I think, really exciting. But it also, it also requires us, I think, to, as we get to the point of creating a framework, is create some adaptability to that framework. So as values shift within our community, we now have a, maybe a long-range tool that we can use that will be adaptable to the changing values. I think one of the conversations we had last year during, at the end of the Jefferson Cluster conversation was, "How do we now incorporate our current values, those maybe best represented from our 2010 racial educational equity policy into enrollment and transfer policy?" And so, so having a tool or a formula, or whatever you want to call it at the end of the day, that we can now have adaptability to is going to be really, I think, beneficial to not only us on this board, but future boards. So I definitely encourage that as a piece of it. And again, as others have said, thank you so much for taking, helping us take this on, and we're looking forward to being a part of it.
One thing, just to respond to that for a second, is one part of adaptability is going to be trust-building, right, with the stakeholder groups, so that there's a feed, there's a conversation loop that's happening between the district and the board and the stakeholders and the public. So I think that's, you know, wanting to establish that early on as a way of ongoing conversation, so that, so that it's, in a way that those values shifts are seamless as the community adapts, I think will be important to this process.
That's a, I think, a great way to put that. Thank you.
So thank you for being here. So this, this whole boundary process has been described as wicked and gnarly, and the only word that I keep thinking about is hairballs. Because, I mean, really, when we've tried to handle these, yeah, when we've tried to handle these issues, it hasn't been pretty, and it really is a wicked gnarly kind of tangle of emotional stuff that happens, and it sounds like we're getting to a process that maybe won't be that, which is great. So part of what I wanted to say is, I think the fact that you're here, and I want to thank John and Judy especially for bringing you here and bringing this to us, is, is a recognition that there are some things that we in Portland Public Schools haven't done very well. And the Jefferson boundary process is one, and I think bringing in some outside experts to kind of help us with that is smart. I would also say, by the way, that the past teacher contracts have, are similar. We have brought in an outside expert to help us with that. I mean, I think there are times when we need to do that. So I very much appreciate that you're here, and I'm excited about the prospects of working with you. And as Steve was talking about the, the processes, it sounds like the first three months are sort of an initial assessment, where are we at? But what I'm especially excited about is Phase Two, which is stakeholder and community engagement, which I presume would be focus groups, listening sessions, all kinds of community engagement. And I guess in my opinion, as I've been on this board over the years, when we've, when we've done that well, and I think about our last two superintendent searches, you know, when we really listen to the community and we engage the community and we do focus groups, is when I think that we have the most trust with the community. And so that's the part that I'm the most excited about and, and hoping that you can help us do really well, so.
Thank you. Once again, I was really excited, first of all, by the, the list of commitments that CPS is going to need from PPS at the end of the document. I thought that was really great, you know, including a transparency default and active engagement by and timely access to PPS decision-makers during the process. I thought those were both great. And overall, I thought the document was really good. I'm looking forward to what comes out of it, and I look forward to seeing how Super SAC can be a part of this, so, thank you.
My two cents just echoes some of what my colleagues are saying. As I think about adaptability and how you build that in, anytime we've done an enrollment balancing piece, part of what makes it challenging, right, is that we set out values, and then eventually two values come into conflict at some point, and you have to decide which one's going to trump which one. As I think about our district, as I think about when I visit schools in southwest Portland, or I visit schools in northwest Portland, or I visit schools in north Portland, north, those communities value different things, and part of it's their terrain. And so, when I hear the descriptions people talk about, how do we pull that together as a coherent, but still allow for individual communities to decide while still looking through an equity lens, to make sure one doesn't pick something that's going to wind up shortchanging somebody else, is just a significant challenge, and I too am really glad. I do remember actually, in one of the Jefferson enrollment balancing comments, a gentleman said, "You know, I actually," and I don't know if he works with you all, "I actually do public processes for PSU, and I got to say, you're not doing it very well." I could help. So here PSU is. So thank you for, for being here and, and just helping us, because I think you're right, that as soon as we can open up that dialogue with our community, and Director Regan pointed it out, that the more often we do that, I think of our last bond, I mean, again, we had, what we wound up with is values that were in conflict, and we had, we wound up choosing, but because the community was part of that and got to engage in that discussion, they saw the trade-offs, and it wasn't perfect, not everybody loved what we put forward, but obviously, majority of our, our community was able to support it. And so I'm really looking forward to that piece. And Judy, I appreciate you calling out how SACIT's going to, and the enrollment and transfer discussion is going to interface with this, because that's a question I had, is how would we possibly be ready to make a decision in January 2015 if we don't also have a recommendation from the group that's working on that? So I was glad to hear that. Any other comments? Great. We look forward to Phase One. Thank you for being here. Now we're going to move on to our next discussion item, which is a revised recommendation for Franklin, Grant, and Roosevelt High School Master Planning and Related Fiscal Impact. Superintendent Smith?
Yes, and this is a continuing conversation. So CJ Sylvester, our Chief Operating Officer, and Jim Owens, the Executive Director of Office of School Modernization, will lead the conversation. And I just want to say thank you for the extensive work the staff has done to really reexamine and come back to us, and the degree to which individual board members have engaged with your questions and dialogue with the staff, as they've been working on figuring out how we land at this adjusted size. So CJ and Jim, thank you for bringing us up to date on staff work at this point. And I'm also just going to say, so that we are not lost, that this is a celebratory moment, that we are able to- moment, that we are able to be in the conversation about, about what size we're launching and hopefully getting to a decision, so we can move our design teams into action.
Thank you, Senator Sylvester.
Thank you.
And it is a good thing to remember that we're, we're talking about investing not only tens of millions, but hundreds of millions of dollars into three of our high schools in the very near term, and that this is an exciting moment for the school district. So, not to say that there aren't some difficult and decisions that need to be made along the way, but the overall impact of this to the school district can't be understated. So, staff is revising our previous recommendation of September 23 regarding adjustments to the capacities of the three high schools that are being fully modernized as part of the 2012 School Improvement Bond. Those high schools are Franklin, Grant, and Roosevelt. The first thing I want to be clear about is that this recommendation does not impact the district's high school system, which remains at seven comprehensive high schools and two focus options, and other bond projects remain wholly intact, as does the $482 million bond program in its entirety. Our current status is the originally defined high school for full modernization projects. These high schools were originally identified at capacities of 1,500 each while building out classrooms for 1,200 at Roosevelt as part of this 2012 bond. Building construction was estimated at $220 a square foot in $2,012 for a 240,000 square foot program area. Following the September 23 board meeting, staff requested that we pause for a series of evaluations and analyses. Numerous site assessments have since occurred. We front-loaded civil, mechanical, electrical, structural, building envelope, including windows, geotechnical, arborist, and 3D massing studies. Staff and design teams have conversed with the State Historic Preservation Office. Both design teams collaborated to further refine the draft comprehensive high school education specification. These assessments provided additional information about the nature and extent of minimum required cost per square foot for our historic buildings in some combination with new ones, all of which contributed to this revised recommendation. There is a balance that must be struck between how many square feet we are building, which is influenced by both intended capacity and the edspec program area, and the cost per square foot, given limited resources. If the cost per square foot goes up, it limits the capacity and number of square feet that can be built. Alternatively, if the capacity and number of square feet goes up, it reduces the available dollars per square foot. The work that staff has done to balance the number of square feet required to provide the comprehensive high school program with capacities and the available resources to retain the existing $220 a square foot is an important aspect of this recommendation. The 2012 bond is not a standalone resource. When combined with the district-wide boundary review process, which you just heard about, and the intention of future bond measures to address the full modernization of the six remaining high schools, it can be maximized to influence and begin to scale up for anticipated future enrollments. It became clear that tight sites like Franklin and Grant should not try to accommodate the scale of four-story buildings that overwhelm the historic and neighborhood context. Further, the resulting decrease in cost per square foot degrades the quality of the finished product. The building evaluations that have been completed to date have served as a stark reminder that the bond project budgets have always been slim, and to reduce them further would not provide the desired result. Both design teams have collaborated to prune the comprehensive high school education specification required area while maintaining program integrity. There are a number of circumstances that further serve as additional background for this staff recommendation. We have revised the draft comprehensive high school area program. We are benefiting from high school enrollment stability as a result of the implementation of the 2010 high school system design, and metro in the city projects significant longer-term demographic changes in the Portland metro area. As previously mentioned, the current high school capacities are identified at 1,500 core, 1,500 classroom for both Franklin and Grant, and 1,500 core, 1,200 classroom capacity at Roosevelt. Staff is proposing that we revise these to 1,700 core area, 1,700 classroom at both Roosevelt and Grant, Franklin and Grant, my apologies, and at Roosevelt, 1,700 core area and 1,350 classroom capacity. The impact of larger buildings has a related impact on project costs. The bond program reserve was established in order to accommodate project scope changes, such as staff is recommending, without impacting other bond project scopes and budgets. Staff has proposed for the full modernization of Franklin, Grant, and Roosevelt high schools that the budget be revised from $247 million to $257 million. The $10 million increase would be funded from the bond reserve. Each project would retain its contingency, and the building hard cost per square foot would remain $220 prior to escalation. Making a final determination about the size of these high schools at your meeting next week allows for the Franklin and Roosevelt projects to remain on schedule. We have been proceeding along dual tracks with our design teams this fall in order to remain on schedule during this time of further review, evaluation, and decision-making. That has been possible only because we are in the master planning phase. All subsequent design phases require that the scope of work be defined. We're happy to answer any questions you may have about any part of this recommendation.
Thank you. Colleagues?
So, I'm struggling with this on a whole bunch of levels. In terms of the school sizes, so, I guess my understanding was that we, when we passed the bond, said that 1,300 was the minimum that we could have a high, a high school and still offer a full program. And my expectation would, was that we were going to be building high schools probably in the 1,500 to 2,000 range. So, I'm not necessarily understanding why we seem to be going to more of a cookie cutter, 1,700 core for each of our buildings at this time. And I'm trying to understand if that's the plan going forward, that every high school would be 1,700. So, I'm, I'm not here yet. And I guess I'm also wondering why we're not talking about expected enrollment forecasts at these, in these different neighborhoods, because every neighborhood is a little bit different, so. I guess I wasn't expecting a cookie cutter, so I'm, I'm, I'm needing more help here, understanding.
Director Regan, I, I don't think the intention is that anything that we do moving forward is cookie cutter, that in fact, on a site-specific basis, each and every school will remain very individual in its characteristics. The bond program, as adopted by the board originally, was for schools with a 1,500 core capacity at all three schools, with the intention that classrooms be built out for 1,200 at Roosevelt. So, that has been in place from the very beginning. What we are talking about is, it's clear that there are significant demographic shifts that are going to be taking place over numerous decades here in the city of Portland, based on metro and Portland projections. And so, while there are short-term, relatively short-term, so 10- and 12-year projections that we get from the Portland State University demographer as part of an ongoing evaluation of, of where we are and where we've been, there are longer-term considerations for the school district than just what we know may be happening in the next decade. And so, what staff is trying to do is to stretch the $2,012 to the extent that they can be stretched in order to assist with some of those future capacity issues. Now, the boundary work that you just heard about, in terms of the PSU Hatfield School of Government and their partnership with the district, is another lever that the board will have at its disposal, and currently has as well, but they're, of course, establishing a new framework and all of those kinds of things, in order to help with the distribution of enrollment across the district. And so, even the enrollment that we currently show or project for each individual high school cluster can and, you know, may well change as a result of boundary adjustments that are made in the next several years and several years after that and ongoing into the future. So, the capital solution, which is what this effectively is, is only one tool in the toolbox, and the board, as, you know, an elected body, has other levers they can pull as well in order to assist in developing parity across the district. As to the size of the future high schools, I don't think we know the answer to that yet. We haven't had the conversation about what's going to be potentially, is there going to be a next bond, when that next bond will be, what schools are going to be in those, if high schools remain the priority, which three high schools would be up next, and of those three high schools, what do we believe the size of those should be? And I think that's another conversation that's yet to be had sometime this winter and spring.
So, I guess I want to have an understanding that by saying that we're building out the core to 1,700 for these three, we're not saying we're building out the core for every high school going forward to 1,700, because it sort of feels that way to me right now.
I don't think we can commit to what future boards would do, because we aren't at that point yet.
And I guess my, my general concern is that, you know, we're talking about building out Grant to 1,700 when our enrollment forecasts show that enrollment might actually even be higher than that when we're done. So, I think the enrollment for Grant is looking to be about, so I'm talking about between 2012 and 2025, enrollment at Grant is expected to be between 1,416 and 1,723 students, while the enrollment forecast for Roosevelt, as an example, is expected to be 800 to 1,012 students. So, I'm just, I'm...
But there's also the number of students living in, in the current boundary area, too, which is significantly higher for Roosevelt. So, there's huge potential there.
I agree.
And I think the piece about, you know, that we're looking at bound, district-wide, how can we adjust boundaries, so that, you know, again, that's another, another tool and another factor here, so.
And I don't know that I'm as concerned about building out the core, but I wonder a little bit about the initial build-out on, Roosevelt's the one I'm really looking at right now, because I don't necessarily think it's appropriate for us to be building out to a point where we could have, you know, 10 empty classrooms when we're done either, that will look just as foolish as not building it big enough and having either portables or having to move kids out of it. So, I guess I'm, I'm not settled on any of these numbers at this point, and I know we're not voting tonight, and I'm looking forward to some community input. The other thing I know is that when we originally passed the bond, we had indicated what we would be spending on each of these buildings approximately. I think Roosevelt was 70 million, Franklin was 85, Grant was 95. I don't know how much of that was based on size versus the work that we thought we were going to have to do within it. Can you talk to that a little bit? Because we're talking about adding $10 million between these three projects, and I know that part of the Roosevelt cost is that we're going to build out a little bit less. I know that we're not going to be moving the students into a different building, so I know that there's reasons for some of the change, but I'm just trying to understand in terms of the 10 million, do we kind of know how that's going to fall out among those three high schools, or...
Well, all, the numbers for all three are effectively changing, because at the time when we did that, we were looking at a gross square feet per student, 166 square feet per students, which was 240,000 square feet for a 1,500, 1,500 school. And, but the different schools at the time had different amounts of existing square feet, which was also part of the calculation as well. Since then, we've had a draft edspec, which you saw at your September 23 meeting, which has been further refined by having both, having both design teams work on it collaboratively. And so, the square feet that we're currently talking about building out for Franklin and Grant at 1,700, 1,700 is about 245,000 square feet, and at Roosevelt for 1,713,50, it would be about 224,000 square feet. So, so the numbers for all three high schools would be changing effectively?
Okay. And then, the, the final question I have, and I know that Tom has brought this up a few times also, is in terms of, you know, when we're looking at student counts, I don't know if there's an impact in terms of student count versus how much space we might allocate in each building for bigger things like career technical education space. And so, one of my questions on Roosevelt, as an example, might be, if we ultimately expect that the school will have fewer students, do we build it out to that bigger amount, but do we add more of something like, you know, we have several career technical education pathways that require far more square footage than others, and I guess rather than assuming that we're building a classroom space, could we look at that as an opportunity to, you know, build out more CTE space in one of those areas that is in high demand but takes more square footage? And has that been considered as part of this, or are we just talking classroom space?
Okay, let me see if I can unwind this a little bit in terms of how we've actually calculated the numbers. Currently, we have 6,000 square feet, which I think most of you are familiar with, for career pathways work in each of the comprehensive high schools. Each of these high schools is a comprehensive high school, and that is built into those square feet numbers that I just told you. So, the 224,000 versus the 245,000 for Franklin versus, for Roosevelt versus Franklin and Grant, all includes 6,000 square feet as part of their common area. We have not looked at, for instance, at Roosevelt, the example you're giving, which is instead of building out for classroom capacity of 1,350, using some of that square feet to increase the, the CTE or the career pathways. That hasn't been part of the conversation to date.
So, just to follow up on that. From a decision-making, because Kevin talked about the train, or either it was Tom or somebody, about the train. And so, when, from, from your standpoint, does this issue need to be settled on, on the square footage? Because I think there's, there's a lot of discussion and, on it, in terms, and several board members have visited places where the square footage is, is, is bigger and offers students into the, you know, we're, we're building into the future, and offers students' ability to have hands-on learning in things like metals and wood and robotics and computer and, and things that are, even with a revitalized Benson, things that these other high schools, I think, would, would, kids would benefit from. So, if, if, if we're going to change that 6,000 square feet, when do you need to know that?
Next Monday night.
Okay. And question two is, can these facilities accommodate that?
Can we add additional square feet? Yes. I, what we'd need to recognize is, if we're adding additional square feet, we were going beyond the $10 million reserve, a use of the reserve that staff had been suggesting. I know that Jim and I have got a great deal of discomfort going beyond that 50% use of the bond reserve, but that's a decision that you as elected officials get to make. That's your prerogative. And, and so, and we just need some indication from you about what you, how many square feet you would like that to be. We've been continuing to operate under the assumption that our existing high school system, which is the seven comprehensive and the two focus options, is what we're supposed to be designing and constructing to. And the comprehensive high schools have got a limited number of career pathways in comparison to, say, full CTE options available at Roosevelt, at Benson High School.
Right.
Although, I will say, part of the, the process has also been to have a CTE presence at every one of the community comprehensive high schools.
Yes.
Not as built out as what we're planning for Benson, which serves the whole system. And a couple of things in motion right now that, like, we have applied for two grants with Oregon Department of Education, both for $350,000 apiece, one that is revitalization for Benson specifically, and the other, which is about revitalizing CTE across the whole system, so we're in motion on that. We also have, we're convening a district-wide... We also have, we're convening a district-wide convening on December third, that's really looking at the whole system of CTE and have some of that conversation. But I think we're imagining these are not going to be, like, building mini Bensons across the whole system. It'll be a strand that you do in a, in a high school, and there will probably be unique strands in each of the community comprehensives, not that we're trying to build out full, full CTE. And I get your maker space concept, that becomes a versatile space, but I think that's some of the conversation, is that there, it's a both-and.
Right, which is why we might need more than six thousand square feet. So, in terms of that, what, what, what cost per square foot should one look at if we're going to expand that?
Well, if you-
Two hundred and twenty?
If you want to tell us how many square feet you'd like to add, we can bring those numbers back to you next Monday night. Because of course-
I think you ought, we should also go back to the hydraulics. Here's what I'm going to tell you, too.
The two hundred and twenty dollars a square foot actually is not a standalone number. There are soft costs that get applied to that contingency, there's all kinds of things. So, it's, it's not as straightforward as simply taking two hundred and twenty dollars and multiplying it times the number of square feet you want to add. And so, yeah, if you want to go back to the hydraulic side-
The hydraulic side, I only say this because everybody was looking at your paper rather than the slide, and I don't know if you got the interactive nature of the slide.
Thanks.
So, which, it would just be the getting to see, just that you're at a choice point here in terms of what happens when you move one piece of this.
There we go. If the enrollment capacity in the area program, oops, now the opposite has happened. Okay. There you go. The construction cost per square foot goes down as the capacity and the area program go up and vice versa. But as the capacity and area program goes down, it allows the cost to come back up.
It's, and it is just going to be a trade-off kind of conversation.
And-
What do you, what do you mean by trade-off conversation?
Well, it, it depends. It's not a trade-off if what you're suggesting is you're going to go deeper than ten million dollars into the bond reserve.
Right.
Then it's not a trade-off, it's an add.
Right.
And we do have, we do have some additional visuals tonight, if you'd like to take a quick look at them. Director Belile was present at the Franklin Dag when that design team went through an exercise around career technical education. And I went ahead and took some of those slides and have added them to this pack, if you'd like to see them real quick. It's showing both Canby and Gladstone, both of which, like Sandy and Sherwood and a number of other school districts around here, are single high school districts. And so, of course, they offer both career technical education and comprehensive in one, in a single building, but it does show the nature of the space. And there are also a couple of slides that show the relationship between spaces that we know we're going to be building as core spaces, and, and the simplicity of just adding a little bit of space and what you get for that space. In other words, if you already know, how about if you take us, take us to some photos here, Jim? Let's talk to them a little bit.
I guess I would also add that there's a relationship that's emerging between schedule, budget, and scope. And where we are right now in the process is there's trade-offs. So, we're still committed certainly to the, to the fall of two thousand seventeen completion for Roosevelt and Franklin. But as we, as we are impacted, because we're not moving ahead for, for a variety of reasons, there's schedule impact, there's cost implications if we delay things. And you've heard that previously when we've talked about some of the contextual information on the bond program, but it's really becoming very approximate now that as we're moving, we're about to make a master plan presentation to you. And so, the timing of all this starts to, starts to connect, and you'll see that very vividly.
So, the photos that are up here right now are from Canby. Up in the upper left is what's called a pre-engineering space. Below that is their research and development area. The upper right is, you know, visibility into a classroom and then a hallway. And one thing you can tell that's, that you'll see in all of these different photos, both between Canby and Gladstone, is the transparency of the space. So, if you're in a classroom, you can see into the lab. If you're in the lab, you can see into the classrooms. We can go to the next set are also from Canby. And again, you've got an IT area, so, and below that, you've got a standard classroom. The upper right, you've got a classroom where public meetings are also held. And then you've got their bio and their ag lab below. And again, you've got physical and visual relationships between these spaces that are, are part of the key characteristics of it. And so, at some point, whether it's six thousand square feet, or whether it's ten thousand or twelve thousand square feet in terms of career pathways, there's an important design element here where you take, now, let's keep going, and then I'll, and then I'll talk through some of the-
Well, I also want to say that it's, just to think about it as career pathways, I think is a limiting way to think about it. Because what we're really talking about is the education of our kids, all the kids.
Right.
And these spaces help in, you know, whether it's mathematics, we just heard about that in Benson, chemistry, physics, what have you. So, I, I think talking about it solely as, in terms of what's required in terms of education for the next century, just, just career is, in my view, limiting.
And that certainly wasn't my intention, if that's what it sounded like. Because the spaces we've been showing you here are actually STEM-related. So, you've got science and mathematics classrooms-
That's a perfect example.
Science and mathematics classrooms that are surrounding, you know, the, the enhanced elective, what's called enhanced elective in the ed program, but it's called, also called maker space. So, you've got, if you flip down to another couple of slides, oh, we lost some slides, never mind. There, there were some nice illustrations of the fact that for an engineering and design, construction, or manufacturing, that science, AP physics, math, AP calculus, intro to engineering are all required classrooms anyway. And so, what you would add is a STEM lab that could be woods, metal fabrication, welding, it could be any, anything, it could be robotics, or an alternative energy lab. So, so the kind of, of lab space or maker space that gets developed at each comprehensive, as the superintendent indicated, may be quite different, and that's part of the career pathways. In other words, every school is not going to be as robust as Benson will be in terms of availability of some of these resources. But at some point, it does become a design-related issue as well. So, it's not just the fact that we've got the square feet, it's how we're using the square feet and how we're co-locating it with the relevant classrooms that we're going to be required to construct in any case. And then having that transparency between those spaces and the lab itself. That was the only point I was trying to make, in spite of the fact that I've been going through all these slides.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, I just, I just want to say that I, for one, am not comfortable, I am comfortable with the staff's recommendation, appreciate all the hard work that's going, gone into it, and I'm not comfortable dipping further into reserves. I think it is really important, I mean, the hallmark of all of this that we hear over and over again of the new spaces is the flexibility. And we talked back in the high school system design process a long time ago about exactly what you've been saying tonight, that we cannot, since we're a multi-comprehensive school district, we're not one where we have just the one building where we can pour everything we've got into that one high school, like in some of the other districts, that we aren't going to be able to do it all at every single campus. But what I'm hearing is that with these flexible spaces, the six thousand foot space, we're going to be, and, and the way it kind of relates with some of the other new spaces, and the amazing opportunities that we're going to have there around things like the theater wing and the gardening and the other things, that we are going to have those hands-on, engaging, and flexible spaces and opportunities for kids. So, I am not comfortable with delaying further. I feel we need to move forward. We heard very strongly from our, our accountability committee that they're concerned that we are potentially not moving forward, that we're not going to keep to our schedule. And I have confidence in our professional team and their recommendations, and the considerable amount of work and groundwork they've done in coming to this revised recommendation. So, just, I just wanted to say that, and I think it's time to move forward with their recommendations.
How much CTE spaces are right now at Franklin? There's a substantial amount, I know.
I think it's about twelve thousand square feet.
It's about twelve thousand now. Are we retaining that as CTE space in our rebuild?
Well, we don't have an approved master plan yet.
Well, theoretically, and your recommended plan? Is there a recommended master plan?
Well, there will be one, hopefully, coming out next week, that will ultimately come to the board the first part of December. And in that plan, the existing CTE space is actually, there are existing buildings that are going to be demolished and replaced, and so that, the, the space that is currently CTE may not exist in its current form. We've identified a replacement space of six thousand square feet. Whether they're going to be able to accommodate their needs in six thousand square feet, or whether they're going to do some horse trading internally in terms of that community in order to accommodate other additional square feet, I don't know.
So, we're demolishing some of the CTE space that's there?
Well, we're also demolishing gymnasiums and all kinds of other space.
Right, but I mean, what you're saying is that we're actually then decreasing the CTE space at Franklin?
That is correct.
From twelve thousand to six thousand?
What's being proposed is less square feet.
If we go over to Grant, Grant used to hold three thousand students. How much CTE space is there at Grant now?
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Is there any?
I don't-
Anybody know? Is there none?
I don't know that number.
Roosevelt? Any CTE space at Roosevelt right now?
I don't know that number off the top of my head either. I apologize for-
Thought maybe somebody from Roosevelt might know that number. Okay, that'd be helpful next week to know the changes when you come forward, the changes at Roosevelt, the changes at Grant, the changes in CTE space.
Those are great comments that we'll research and bring back next Monday night.
Thank you very much.
And then just one last question, just how can I understand the soft cost, hard cost thing? So, we, right now, you, we have a two hundred and twenty dollars square foot, per square foot cost?
That's the, construction cost for the building only in second quarter, two thousand twelve dollars.
Okay. And, okay, and so that doesn't include design or things like that?
No, doesn't include any site improvements, doesn't include escalation, doesn't include contingency.
An FFNE.
Yeah, fixtures, furnishings, and equipment are FFNE.
Well, I think it would be helpful just, just so, just so we have data on the table, what we know, what would be, if we were to put four thousand additional square foot, feet, what that would cost, and then we all get to make a decision.
So, four thousand additional square feet for CTE space in each school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I, I got, I got three folks looking for, how about I go Director Regan, Director Knowles? Oh. Okay, go ahead, Director Buell.
Do you mean adding four thousand, or do you mean switching four thousand?
Would I?
You know, see what I'm saying, I'm, I'm not sure that we were clear, that, that CJ was clear.
No, I think she was-
Oh, no, she's adding.
Adding, totally adding?
So, four thousand per school, so you'd have ten thousand.
As opposed to switching four thousand from someplace else? In other words, you got a certain size building, yeah, and so you move four thousand from this to CTE?
I, I'm assuming that switching is not going to cost anything, but I could be wrong in that.
Switching would cost you, right, to CTE because it's more expensive, or would it?
Well, no, because-
Would that be a possibility?
We're, we're still at the conceptual stage, so at this point, it would not, if you wanted, but then there's other impacts. What are you switching out? Are you pulling classrooms?
Right, exactly, 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 yeah, exactly, that. That is the other impact, and I was, but that's why I was trying to clarify where we are. I don't know, you, like, can you ballpark that other impact?
No, what we're talking about is bringing that material back next Monday.
Okay, so that, that would be part of, that you would know next Monday-
Correct.
-what they might switch around.
Well, no, actually, we're not talking about switching. What Director Kuller has asked for is for us to bring back a CTE of ten thousand square feet at each school. So, instead of six thousand, it's an additional four thousand for a total of ten thousand square feet of CTE at each school, in addition to the balance of the program.
To determine what the cost of that is that we can-
Right, that's what, is that what you're asking for, Tom? Just an additional?
But that's an additional piece of information, not the one proposal.
Right.
Okay. So, the, your staff, the staff recommendation will still stand as an option?
Correct, we'll bring that, that is, information back in response to a board request.
This is also very iterative. As we, as we go back and pull this information, we'll be presenting some information in our master plans, and then as we go through schematic design, which is the, really the first design phase that we'll be starting, we'll come back with even more detail. So, we'll, we'll be giving more information as we, as we move ahead, but what, what we need is the, is the profile for the master plans, which is, which is the key element right now.
Director Regan, and then Director Knowles.
So, Director Knowles and I went and visited Sherwood High School recently. It was amazing to see their CTE capacity, but I also understand that they are a district that has one high school, and so they kind of have their Benson and comprehensive neighborhood, you know, as, as one. So, I totally understand that that's not what we're looking at. What I think I'm struggling with is I don't have a clear understanding of what six thousand square feet of CTE space will get us in our high schools. And I don't know if it's a huge, a huge amount of opportunities for kids, or if it's a pretty limited amount of space. And so, I think that's why I'm struggling with the six thousand square feet. It seems like a very small amount of career technical education space, and it was part of our, you know, during our high school redesign, we wanted to have some career technical education opportunities in all of our high schools. So, again, I'm not anticipating that it would be a full-blown Benson kind of experience, but I do want to make sure that, that kids have many, many experiences to do the hands-on learning. And I guess, again, in terms of the cookie cutter, the reason I was specifically asking about Roosevelt is if you look at the numbers and you anticipate that they may have potentially less students, does it give us an opportunity to talk with that community about, would you want to build more CTE hands-on experience, given that? I don't know that we could have the same conversation necessarily with Grant, because we expect seventeen hundred kids there. So, I guess I'm just asking if we still have the opportunity to have that discussion or not, so. And it seems like if we don't have it soon, we won't have the opportunity, so that's all I'm asking.
I do believe representatives from the Roosevelt community are planning on speaking next Monday, because this will be an action item at that time, about how they feel about the staff recommendation.
Director Knowles?
Thank you, you guys, for being here today. I just have a couple of comments. One is related to Benson and our comprehensive high schools. I, I'd like to see us stop talking about Benson as being the catch-all or the, the comprehensive that is like Sherwood or any of the others, because I don't really think that is the same thing. Benson is a career technical high school, period. Sherwood, Sandy, Canby, all of those schools are comprehensive high schools, and they all have full CTE. And I believe that over the years, we have totally dismantled our CTE program here in Portland Public Schools, and that we need to get back to that as a very important piece for many, many of our students. You know, we have, I think I've said this before, we have eleven thousand high school students and, you know, space for two thousand, if we get up to that at Benson, that leaves us with nine thousand students. I'm sure some of them will want to do CTE. I'm, I'm guessing about fifty percent of them at least will want to do CTE, especially if we're trying to get to forty, forty-twenty. You have students who need CTE to, for that as well. So, I think that, that constantly saying that Benson is our CTE and everybody else gets this little thing over here is, is the wrong way for us to approach this, because I really do believe that CTE is something that will help hold our students in school and provide them with the, what they need in order to be successful citizens when they leave our schools, not that they're just graduating, but they're prepared for a career or college. And so, I, I think that's really important. I'm, I'm also a little concerned about how late we are to the game in some of this discussion about CTE. And so, I would tend to be a person who's going to err on the side of more space versus less as we kick off this group that's going to be discussing CTE in December, after we already have to make this decision. That's a, that's a real concern to me, especially since, at least I've been raising the CTE flag for about a year. So, I, I, I'm sorry that we're so far behind the, the ball on this one, and I, I am not willing to slow the train down. I think we need to move ahead, but I'd like to do that in a way that- But I'd like to do that in a way that provides us with as much space for CTE as possible. One of the things that we saw out at Sherwood was the space... Multi-use space, which you showed some of it here, where you can use space for a number of different things. At computer labs, they had about six guys who were in there working on old computers that the Navy gave them, refurbishing them and making them ready for using in classrooms. It was pretty amazing that they... You know, some of the things that they were able to do just in a regular classroom. So when we talk about CTE space, I mean, part of it has to do with the space that's got the saws and the metal and all of that. But the rest of it is space that could be used for many different things. And I think we need to take that into consideration when we're talking about the amount of space that we're going to need for each one of these. And so, I mean, that's pretty much where I am. I'm hoping that we'll be able to get to a space where we can see how much space we're actually going to need. And I guess it's one of... I know you guys are going to come back with that. I think that's great. I don't know how much space these other high schools are currently use for that. I think that would be helpful for us to know that. You know, what is the square footage at Camby? What's the square footage at Sherwood? What's the square footage out at Sandy? Because, again, I think we need to have comprehensive high schools have a full CTE program. So...
Director Morton?
Yeah, two quick comments. One is that I think I tend to lie on the side of always wanting to have as much space as possible planned for more students. But certainly have that plan within the accountability structure in terms of the funding that we have for it. And I think you've proposed something that does that. So I really do appreciate that. The other thing, too, and this has been referenced at least a couple of times, we've got a lot of rough riders in the audience today. And I wanted to make sure that you don't just... Please come in and talk to us next week. But don't just wait for that. You can email us or contact us and let us know what you're thinking on what you've heard so far. I think that would be really helpful. You know, I personally spend a lot of time in north and northeast Portland, and I see a lot of kids, a lot of kids, in these schools. And we certainly see them in our schools. And we know that in some areas, we're not catching nearly as many as who we... As what we would catch if, in fact, we had a rebuilt...
Robust.
Robust Roosevelt High School. So I want to be conscious of that, too. And that plays into some of these assumptions in terms of student numbers, so... But let's hear from you guys.
They'll be happy to talk to you. To get back to Director Knowles real quick, just so that there are no surprises, next Monday, I mean, some of the things we do know about other CTE programs at some of these, you know, one high school districts, so Camby, Sandy, and Sherwood, is that they can have up to 30,000 square feet devoted to CTE. So what we're talking about is, yeah, is a fraction of that. The Gladstone is more in the range of 82 or 83 hundred square feet. And it is, again, that flexible maker space, such as you saw from the Camby photos. So I won't run you back through more photos of Gladstone, but very comparable, same design team, same idea. But the numbers are substantially larger in these single school, high school districts.
So then we have to start thinking about, are we dipping into our bond reserves beyond the comfort level of our professional staff? Are we taking away other parts of the building, which are also valuable parts of the building? I mean, so...
Well, I guess I want to mention a little bit about that process. That's what this has made me think of, like, I think of the design advisory group that I get to sit on in Franklin. And these are some of the questions that we haven't delved too far into. But the community is beginning to figure out what is its priority. Would they rather have 12,000 square feet of CTE at that school? Or because one of their CTEs is about nutrition and the foods program, that requires a lot less of the maker space, for example? And so would they rather have a performing arts center? And so, again, as we go through this process, to your point, Director Regan, not a cookie cutter, even though the numbers look cookie cutter, how dangerous it is for us to think that every one of these high schools, which have very different layouts and very different looks, is going to wind up being the same? So having some people weigh in, and the design advisory groups seem to be the right place, the right to come with us and have some recommendations or have some ideas. I have no doubt that people are going to want everything. That's the danger, right? I want CTE. I want a pool. We want this. In fact, I heard students, right? Aren't they, right? Students are saying, "We want a pool." I want a pool, too, by the way. I'm saying that as we tour in Seattle. And when I imagined what that reserve, that contingency was, it was four things like that. Do we decide that we want to do something like that? So I piggyback on Director Atkins' point is 10 million is absolutely there. This is what we've looked to use it for, to make sure that we right-size this so that we don't open buildings that all of a sudden we're saying, "Well, you were assigned to that high school, but now we're going to reassign you before we even open it for you." And I'm cautious. I'm worried about going well below that, because one of the questions I have, and this will tie into what I was just saying, but it'll be different than our CTE discussion. There have been some questions that have come up in the Franklin Design Advisory Group about... My understanding is that there is a former river or stream that runs underneath that building. People have heard it called Trillium Creek or something. I don't know. So one, I wanted to know if our geotechnical work there, it's probably not that in-depth. Is that correct? That we wouldn't have discovered whether or not there's a river running underneath Franklin High School?
Actually, we have streams running underneath a number of our properties. And in fact, if you take a... There's a beautiful map out that shows Portland as it used to be before we took all of the streams and put them in concrete and covered them. And this entire area was a major tributary to the Willamette and Columbia Rivers. And so I haven't heard that particular comment about Franklin. Certainly, our project team would be familiar with the nature and extent of it. But in fact, we know that we've got... We've got creeks running under a number of our properties. And it's the nature of Portland.
And I bring that up because I think of when we come to those, when we were in Seattle, there was one school that a lot of people fell in love with, and it was about almost double its budget. And it's because there were a number of issues that they ran into, as I expect us possibly running into with our old schools, such as old oil tanks, right? We just talked... We're about to talk about decommissioning our...
Decommissioning oil tanks.
But that wasn't done 50 years ago or 100 years ago. So who knows what we're going to dig up when we start demolishing some of these buildings? And I just... I get concerned that we're going to dream and we're going to spend that contingency before we get to the place where we're actually going to come across some of those issues. So that's, I guess, just one thought. One... The next I want to comment on, again, as I've gone through the design advisory group, to see how they're co-locating and putting the adjacencies of, do we put STEM, so science, technology, engineering, math, right next to that space maker, which allows for that flexibility? So it's actually increasing that space rather than just saying it's dedicated maker space, and that's all it will be. Right, multi-use. Understanding that there is an interplay between those disciplines, right? And that when we talk about 21st century learning, that's what we're talking about, is people do not build in silos anymore. They build in teams, and it's across disciplinary. And so I guess that gives me less concern about the 6,000 square feet space. And the last thing I want to mention was just a really fine detail, but for all those music teachers out there, I guess I was a little disappointed, but glad to see that it might be one of the first things added back, is the idea of sharing a band and choir room. They're very different, and their needs are very different, and it could create scheduling problems. So I would hope that we could look at, again, putting two separate spaces for that. But are there other comments?
Yeah, I just keep coming back to not getting hung up on X,000 square feet is what we must have. Given that, A, it's going to be flexible throughout the building in the ways you've been describing, and B, our expectation is that teaching and learning is going to go on in a different way, so that we have hands-on and engagement and all these... It's not just go to this one giant room and do these things and get engaged. That needs to be happening throughout the building and all the different spaces. So, you know, again, given that we have a limited budget from our voters and an obligation to stay on budget and on schedule, I'm really not comfortable with saying, "Well, let's add here, let's do more here, let's add this." We've got a really well-thought-out recommendation. And again, I really feel uncomfortable with making last-minute switches to that based on, you know, X number, thousands of square feet wish list for this and that, when we've got a clear vision that includes flexibility and hands-on learning for all students throughout the entire campus.
Any other comments or questions? Do you have what you need from us? Do you know where most of us are standing so that you understand? It sounds like you're going to come back with this recommendation with some options and what that result, trade-offs, would be if we decided to expand or decrease?
Well, let me confirm. I mean, the items that we're going to be coming back with are the existing square feet that are devoted and currently being used for CTE at Franklin, Grant, and Roosevelt as compared to the 6,000 square feet that's being proposed in the EdSpec. If we add 4,000 square feet per school of CTE, what's the additional cost? And there was some interest in knowing how much CTE square feet there was at additional high schools. That's why I wanted to give you the heads up, that many of those, it's far larger than anything we're considering.
I had a question about what 6,000 square feet buys you. So if you take three or four different CTE programs, if you could just give us some sense of whether or not those would fit, or how many of those would fit within that kind of space?
I just... I'm having trouble just understanding whether we're talking about just one offering or three per school, or what we're talking about.
Okay. And perhaps we can do some... Have some quick visuals for you in terms of drawings up on the board or something? Does that help you?
Yeah, one more question.
Which is the $20 million contingency fund, which is basically scope changes, which you just came to us with a $10 million scope change. If we were to add more CTE space, as an example, that would be a scope change versus seeing a river underneath the building and having to deal with that. That's in the 15% contingency fund or in the escalator fund? So essentially, could you describe the three different contingency funds that add up to quite a bit of money?
When we constructed the bond, we had different levels of contingency that were built into the program. At the project level, each project had 15% contingency associated with it. So when you look at the total budget per project, 15% of it was dedicated for unknowns, differing site conditions, jurisdictional changes, things that were fairly small but typically was identified when you're well into design. The next level was an escalation contingency of sorts, 45 million at the program level. Because it's an eight-year bond program, we were anticipating that we would be seeing cost increases over that time. And I would say personally, given where we are, we're just... We just celebrated our first year in the bond program, that we don't know exactly where construction costs are going, where labor costs are going. So we have an allocation model for the 45 million. And again, as the report states, we're looking at allocating quite a bit of it to these schools. And then thirdly, the program reserve component. And it isn't just limited to scope changes. It's also for significant unknowns that occur, such as if we have a major code change by the city of Portland. If we have something significant beyond what was anticipated, that would be another source that would be available. So what we're bringing forward here is a pretty clear scope change. But it was also intended to be used for other purposes that may arise over the course of the eight-year program. I'm not sure if that fully answers it.
Yeah, no, that's very helpful. And then, so when you add up all those contingencies together, they're separate buckets, but what's the total dollar figure?
So it'd be 45 for escalation, 20 for program reserve. I don't have the number for the projects on the top of my head, because it's each project, and I'd have to look at each one of the high schools.
15%.
Plus Fabian, plus each of the summer programs. So we have contingency built into the projects. And by the way, that's a fairly standard industry metric that's used for project-level work.
Okay.
This summer, IP 13, Improvement Project 13, for example, we came in at a little under 10% for unknowns that occurred. So just to give you some order of magnitude.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. The board will now consider its business agenda. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to our business agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second to approve?
Sorry.
Director Atkins moves to approve, and Director Knowles seconds to approve the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment on the business agenda?
Yeah. We're doing all the numbers at once. Let me know when I can make an amendment, please.
Any changes, I'm sorry? No? Okay. So is there any board discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to segregate out Resolution Number 4835, the part on Pacific Educational Group only.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Second.
Director Buell moves to remove Resolution 4835 and move it to its own vote outside of the business agenda. Director Kurler seconds. Is there any board discussion on the amendment? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. No?
No.
Any abstentions? I don't know what that vote was. I think it was two in support and...
I think it was three.
Director Morton?
What's that? It's fine, we can...
Remove it?
Yeah, we can segregate it.
Okay. Director?
I don't have a strike.
Regan? I need you to vote.
Sure.
Okay, so we have one, two, three... No.
How did Kurler vote?
Four.
One, two, three, four. Thank you.
Okay, we segregate, okay. Thank you.
Four in favor and three opposed, with Representative Davidson voting?
Yes.
Yes. To remove Resolution 4835 into a separate vote outside of the business agenda. Having that amended, we will now consider the full business agenda as amended. All those in favor, please... Any other board discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. The business agenda as amended is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Davidson voting?
Yes.
Yes. The board will now consider Resolution 4835. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt?
So moved.
Second. Director Morton moves to adopt, and Director Kurler votes... Or seconds? Why can't I not talk about this? Seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4835, a contract with Pacific Education Group. Is there any board discussion?
I just think this takes an explanation from me, because I'm going to vote no, and it's... I would like to see us begin to shift this type of money more into our classroom things, dealing with diversity, things in our classroom, whether it be history or whether it be trying to get children less prejudiced. I just think it would be... We should begin... We should be... We've been doing this a long time. We should begin to move it in the classroom. That's my own...
But I think that's exactly what these consultants are helping us do. So maybe there's a... I mean, we've got our own folks trained in-house in the district to be able to conduct the trainings. And the work now is, as I understand it, is proceeding along the lines of things like how do we transform special education? How do we transform our education for emerging bilinguals? And so I guess I have a different perspective on it. To me, it's all about classroom practice. That's the key.
It's about the whole organization.
And the whole organization.
And I'll just say, we've had... So every school has a principal and teacher equity team that does the professional development for the school. This year, we're expanding our work to include work with action research in the classroom. So it's helping teachers do individual action research in their classroom that's focused on equity, and also work with parents in some schools. And then in central departments, so the one that you're seeing here is having every central department have their equity team, but they look specifically at the work that they, as a department, do, and what does that mean in terms of their decision-making, in terms of their resources, in terms of what they prioritize? And it's supporting them in building their equity plan. So it's truly organization-wide.
And part of that comes back to being able to have the capacity as a district to have a budgeting process that uses an equity lens, so that we can differentiate resources. And I think we've heard pretty clearly the importance of doing that, but we can't do that if the organization as a whole is not using an equity lens and understanding and transforming themselves all with the same, the same goal, so.
And we are working, to Steve's point, on training our own staff to be able to deliver more and more of the training, so that we're becoming, you know, self-sustaining in terms of how we provide this.
Right.
So I just want to make a quick point. I think it's worth segregating, just so we can highlight a little bit about and have the conversation, because I think the conversation needs to be intentional, and, and I'm probably more on the side where we need to be unapologetic about how we invest in equity and how we invest in changing the culture of this district that has left out, left out a lot of kids, and actually the largest growing population of kids. But I also want, want us to understand, too, that, that the investment that we make is really just that. It's, it's changing the culture of a district. And this kind of investment has been criticized, I think, in the past, but I, my question is, what is the price to changing the culture and the direction of a district this size with this many employees? And, and if, if those that have criticized can come and tell me, no, it costs this much, and here's who, here's who can do it, and here's how you do it, I'd be happy to listen to them. But, but I think it's important for us to continue to maintain our investment in it, and like I said, I'm going to be, I'm going to continue to be unapologetic about it.
One other thing I would add here is if we were looking to increase teacher access to these trainings, we would increase our sub-budget in order to release teachers to be able to participate in the training, because that is the place that ends up being the employee group that costs us more money, because we need to plan for subs. So if we were looking, to your point, Steve, to make this more accessible to teachers, that would be the place we would focus on investing more money.
And I think it's important, you know, Carmen Rubio, the executive director of the Latino Network, spoke earlier today, and I think she and the organizations that are represented in the Coalition of Communities of Color are banking on the fact that this is just not an intellectual exercise that this district is going through, but this is an exercise that in fact, and an investment that in fact is going to, going to see improved outcomes for each kid. So, and I think that's, that has been from day one, the commitment of the district to this, to this work.
Any other comments? Board will now vote on Resolution 4835, the expenditure contract for Pacific Educational Group. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
The Resolution 4835 is passed by a vote of six to one, with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. We are through our agenda items. The next meeting of the board will be on Monday, November 18. The meeting of the board is now adjourned.